I opposed. Hearing none. We're out of executive session. We will reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors, or the special, what do you mean, special session of Board of Supervisors. That's not me. Okay. So, item number one is a presentation and discussion of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. That would be Mr. Millman. You are up.
Chairman, before we present item number one, just for the record, if we can announce that Vice Chairman Sertie has left the meeting.
I meant to do that. Yes. Vice Chairman Sertie has left the meeting. Yes, sorry about that. Go ahead, Mr. Millman.
Hit it. There we go.
There you go.
Good morning. Joel Millman, Director, Arizona Work, Penalt County. We're good? Okay. Here we go. Thanks for the opportunity here to present to you just an update on the 2020-2023 Arizona Work, Penalt County Workforce Development Plan. I also have with me the Vice Chair of the Penalt County Workforce Development Board, Harold Christ, who's got my back. So, and Harold may chime in during this presentation as well. We have a number of slides. I don't intend to go through every slide in every level of detail, but only to answer any questions you may have in respect to the agenda that you have in front of you today. But we have a modification to our plan, and why do we need to do a modification? As the slide says, we operate, Arizona at Work, Penalt County operates under a federal grant under the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. And through that act, a four-year plan is required to be on file and followed by a local workforce development area, of which Penalt County is one of 12 in Arizona. This plan is ultimately approved and accepted by the state workforce board, which is the Workforce Arizona Council that is appointed by the governor. Our plan, it was a four-year plan, must be reviewed at least in detail every two years to make sure it's current. And you can see some of the criteria up on the screen in this slide of what drives and what is the determining factors in this modification. Since we initiated this plan in 2020, we've had some significant economic conditions that hit us, like COVID, that impacted our workforce system. And we also had some changes in our financing as far as the allocation of the funds that we are allocated for this grant. And we are also looking internally, our board structure has not changed. We still have a 19-member workforce development board, but we are looking at some, implementing some structural changes on how we do deliver services to the community and to the citizens and businesses in Penalt County. And so, just to give you a little background, this is the, what's called Arizona's Public Workforce System. Under this federal grant, Arizona at Work is the brand of this that has been accepted by the state. And so, that's why you'll always hear us refer to ourselves as Arizona at Work. Essentially, through all that mess, that local governments, which are the, this body in front of me here, the Board of Supervisors, accepts the funds that are allocated to the county. And then through our local workforce development board, the Penalt County Workforce Development Board, we use those funds to deliver services through three programs, the Adult Dislocated Worker and Youth Programs. And it also funds board activities. And the Workforce Development Board is really the body that strategizes, in conjunction with Board of Supervisors, in the implementation of a local service delivery system. And that service delivery system includes not only our three programs that I mentioned in the, that circle to the left of this slide, but also coordinating services through, for instance, Adult Education, Family Literacy Act, that is offered in Penalt County through the Queen Creek Unified School District, as well as Central Arizona College, at the behest of the Arizona Department of Education. And then the other programs are through the Arizona Department of Economic Security. So, we try to bring all those parties together and seamlessly deliver services. Our funding, we are allocated funds based on a formula that is determined in the law. The state has some options as far as how to allocate those funds. This is just to give you a picture of the level of funding that we've received. PY, program year 2015, was the first year that Penalt County was operating as a, their own standalone workforce development area. Prior to program year 15, we were part of the consortium with Gila County. We are about to, the funding here is based on the federal budget and how much is allocated to all the states. In Penalt County, we are in the midst of working with the state to determine what our allocation will be for the next allocation, which we should be receiving in the next couple of months. We are anticipating approximately a two point, about a 10% decrease in our funding, just based on the federal allocation. Last year, Arizona received approximately $95 million for statewide activities. This year, it's anticipated the state itself would get about 86 million, and that be divided accordingly. And sort of how the state divides it up is on the graphic up above. For two programs, 85% of that state allocation is set aside for local workforce development areas. 60% of the dislocated worker funds are allocated the same way. So, that 85% and the 60% are divided 12 different ways, based on a formula. And that's how we get the dollar amounts below. Next.
Yeah, just, I think more for the public interest is, what is it, what do you mean by dislocated worker?
Dislocated worker is a, is a program that targets individuals who have lost employment through no fault of their own. These are individuals that may be caught up in a company layoff, or a company lays people off. There's also another category of dislocated worker, and those are individuals who are called displaced homemakers, that are folks that are tied to a major breadwinner, so to speak, that have not worked and need to enter the workforce. And so, they could fall into that category as well.
Thank you.
Sure. This is just a depiction. I don't want to spend a lot of time on, plus it's hard to read, and I apologize for that. It's, looks great on your, your screen when you're just staring at it on your own PC. But this is just a, we went through a strategic planning session a couple of years ago, the Workforce Board did. And this really depicts the interconnectivity of a lot of initiatives throughout the county that it takes to make this happen, to really get a comprehensive workforce development system working together and the reliance on other efforts throughout the county. So, we, we don't claim to have all the answers, and we probably couldn't do a lot of what we do without a lot of our partners and stakeholders throughout the county. So, we just tried to capture that in some type of graphic to kind of put it in perspective and keep us focused. What I'd like to do here is just quickly go through, we have four goals that are, that are outlined in the plan. The goals were determined to, one of the tenets of our plan is to align with the state workforce plan. So, the state of Arizona has a similar plan, and they just submitted their modification to the U.S. Department of Labor and Department of Education, awaiting approval. We aligned our four goals to the state plan, just to ensure that we are in sync with statewide efforts at a local level. So, and you can see the strategies that we have in our plan there, that we're working towards. They have not changed. We didn't change any of these strategies. Strategy one, I just wanted to point out that we will be, we're open to other measures to determine impact. I know that the county itself is working on a strategic plan, and we'd like to align ourselves with some of the goals in there. So, we look forward to that. And you can see the other strategies that, again, these are things that we'll be focusing on, that the Workforce Board will be focusing on to implement, to ensure that. Goal two is a major goal here, which we're looking at, is serving businesses. As I mentioned, we have two customers. We have a job seeker, and we have the business community. And we have a number of service delivery options that we can provide both. Goal two really focuses on the needs of the business. And with the way the, you know, the, the direction the county is going with its major economic development growth, current and in the future, we need to ensure that we, to the best of our ability, are prepared to provide first-rate service that we can to the business community. We have a number of options that can benefit the business community, that we want to make sure we are prepared to do so. So, this goal is, we're just getting started in revisiting how do we currently conduct and provide our business services, and we're going to be evaluating that and looking at, ensuring that we are prepared to not only improve where we are, but to ensure that we are ready for the, the growth that's pending. Goal three is a, is a big one. Those of you who, I just want to go back, this, the plan that we're, I'm discussing here was out for public comment from March 25th through April 8th. That's a public comment period. We received one comment, which was incorporated into the plan. But the plan, I just let you know, was dynamic. So, if we ever came up with a major initiative or change, we can go back and modify this plan as we need. Goal three is a major goal in the plan. It probably takes up about a third of the plan itself. This is where the rubber hits the road in providing services directly to the job seeker community. So, goal two, goal three are really the crux of this plan. So, we are, are looking at changing the way we do business. One thing we learned from COVID is, you know, we have a job center in Casa Grande during the last year. We really closed it to the public for a little over a year. And what that taught us and our colleagues around the state and actually around the nation is that we need to change our business model. So, we are looking at not only maximizing the service we do for in-person visitors, whether it's at that job location, or taking our in-person services on the road, and to kind of increase our footprint throughout the county, so folks don't have to come to one location. We take our services out. And also, instilling a virtual option, so folks that don't have to travel can get the same level of services virtually, or some type of, excuse me, some type of mix, you know, finding that happy medium between the virtual and the in-person experience. So, we're looking at a number of options for that. It's exciting and frightening at the same time, because you want to have this all in place like yesterday. But we are moving forward. We have some strategies that include the use of virtual reality headsets for career exploration that we can take to the schools. We can take around the county, and then take those experiences and develop a plan for individuals. And then really, you know, on the strategy four, making sure what we're doing is really aligned with high-growth industries and occupations that are coming to the county, that we're in sync with the training providers that provide the training to fill the skill gaps of each of the individuals that we're looking to serve. And those are in line with the industry needs, so.
So, Mr. Millman, a question. Are you finding that you're able to fill those needs of the businesses, to fill those gaps that you're talking about?
I would say we're, we're always looking to improve, but currently, I would say we're on the right path to fill, to say emphatically, yes, we are filling for the businesses that we are engaged with. Like, we have very good relationships with them and finding strategic ways of helping them address their labor needs through some of the services. The, the underlying question right now is everybody has is, we need employees. We, we need folks to come in and apply. We have openings. That's, as we all know, it's a national phenomenon. We're, under the next goal, just switching over here, strategy four, Harold and I were just talking about our, you know, our advertising outreach, education to the community about what we can do to attract people to the vacancies in, in the labor market that exist, kind of enticing people to come in and, and apply. There's plenty of work to be had. And so, we are working with employers to, and that goes back to even goal two, where we're talking about the business service needs, where we really need to listen to the needs of each of the industries. In fact, we, on May 11th, we'll be having a, a listening session with some of the manufacturers in the county to hear from them, what their quote-unquote pain points are. And then we'll take that input and put a strategic plan together with their input to address their needs.
Thank you.
I hope that answered your question.
It does.
A lot of words that, just let me know if I didn't. And then just continue with goal four. Goal four is kind of like a catch-all, is making sure that everything I just told you about is, is efficient, and we're held accountable to deliver what we say. And it's really the crux of where the Penalt County Workforce Development Board comes to shine, under the leadership of Liz Tuck, our Chair, and Harold, our Vice Chair, and the other 17 members of the board. And, and so, they're responsible for kind of setting the vision and making sure that we have everything that we need to provide these services, as I described. Just want to quickly just hit a couple of things here. We came up with what we call the Penalt Way, just to kind of keep us grounded and focused, that we don't want to get tied into what we call the status quo of having to deliver these types of services. This Arizona at Work and the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act have been around in some iteration for over 70 years. And, you know, it all started back in the 1930s with the Depression and the coming of the Social Security Act and unemployment insurance. And then, over the years, it just evolved into what we have today. In some ways, the unfortunate circumstances under COVID, really, if there was any positive, kind of kicked this, what I personally, my own personal opinion, is an old tired system kind of gave it the kind of little kick that it needed. And here in Penalt County, we'd like to develop things that work for Penalt County and not just be tied to, you know, this is the way it's been, and this is the way we do things. We'd like to think a little freer. So, that is, we just came up, and that's kind of like our North Star or guiding principles that we like to operate under. The big change, change, but the modifications to the plan, I just want to quickly hit on some of these high points. We did contract with Trevor Stokes of the Partnership for Workforce Innovation. He updated our labor market analysis. This labor market analysis is posted on our Arizona at Work, Penalt County website. And I can make sure that possibly Natasha has it, and she can blast it out as need be. Because the one we had before was the one we've been using. We modified it a couple of years ago, but we wanted to make sure we were starting to capture some of the conditions and some of the changes that occurred. And we're in the process of bringing onboard a data analyst to help us go through all the data that was coming out of this, and we can start using it and analyzing it and putting our, our plans together to, to make this work. This is something that is not, you know, it's a plan, it's posted, so it's static the day it's posted. It's something we want to keep alive and constantly update. Some of the, just key findings, I just randomly went through it and just picked a couple of points. It goes in-depth on some of the industry clusters and, and the data that supports it, the education attainment requirements, what training is required. There's a host of data in there that we are in the process of sifting through and, and putting, putting it into action. Again, just some, call it random, points that were, were brought about through this analysis. But I recommend that everybody take a, a good read of it. It's easy reading, there's a lot of charts. There's not a lot of narrative, but there's a lot of data that can be interpreted and then strategized from. Oops, jumped a little ahead. And then circling back to our service delivery system here, as I mentioned before, we are really focusing on how do we delivering services in person. The telephone, one of the major changes we made now is to, we're, we're trying to align ourselves and take advantage of the resources the county offers. So, right now, it was effective in February. Rather than an individual anywhere in the county wanting to contact Arizona at Work, we, and, and calling the job center in Casa Grande, and, and they get busy down there, we have partnered with the Penalt County Customer Contact Center. So, now the main number for anybody wishing to contact Arizona at Work will immediately be able to go through the contact center. We've been working with the staff there, have been amazing and great. They are doing some type of initial screening of calls, because we had a lot of calls that folks are, think they're dialing the right number, and it ties up our staff at the job center. There are some calls that come that just take a quick reference, and we don't even need to get the call, like, how do we get hold of unemployment insurance? Contact this number. And, and they, so they're screening a lot of those calls, and we continue to work with them as we develop our, our service delivery models. And then virtual services, as I mentioned, we're looking to build up our web presence and putting a lot of online tools for those folks who are self-sufficient in that realm, and be able to guide themselves to a point where if they need to contact us, we have those other mechanisms for that to be in place. Another point, the last bullet down there, through our grant for qualified individuals for the adult dislocated worker and youth programs, if an individual needs to upgrade their skills, and we can refer them to qualified training providers, for instance, Central Arizona College and a number of other training providers throughout the state. We had originally allocated up to $3,500 per participant per year to assist with financing that training. So, it's tuition, you know, whatever it takes as far as for that. And we did an analysis of some of the training costs that it take, especially in the direction that the county is going in some of the training programs that are out there. So, this dollar amount is a requirement in the plan, to have this stated in, in the plan. We're looking to raise that from $3,500 to $6,000 per participant. And this is 100% funded by the grant funds itself. It's, it's built into it. And so, that would just allow us a little more flexibility on some of the training programs that may be available to an individual. We have the ability now, we have $3,500 with the ability to exceed that upon approval. This just eliminates that step to have to approve, you know, go to another approval step, and the service providers can make that determination.
But that's not to say that the training costs $6,000. It's just to have that ability.
Okay. That's a, that's a ceiling, and then anything above that would have to be approved, or, and it helps us budget how many people we can serve in the max, and.
Sure. Question from Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joel, kind of to the training aspect, I know one of your presentations years ago, you were implementing a, almost a class for soft needs. You know, it's best if you show up on time. It's best that you have your hair combed and, and, you know, and, and different things about these jobs. Do you still have that program going and a certificate?
Yeah.
After they completed, that they can carry with them when they go to look for a job?
Yes, Supervisor, that's, you're referencing the Arizona Career Readiness Credential.
Okay.
And you're correct, it was, we, we've had this, I know we've talked about it a few times. That is still available. It was just revamped. It would, it went from, and, and what the Arizona Career Readiness Credential provides is a governor's initiative, came up four or five years ago. It provides seven foundational building blocks for an individual. Three are called hard skills, it's math, data, and I think information gathering. And then there were four fundamental, what are called soft skills, as you alluded to, Supervisor, you know, showing up on time, communication, flexibility, and getting along with others, and things like that, that we could match up the occupations that are being offered in the community, and an individual could either test in or test out, but come away with a certificate, whether they are, you know, bronze, silver, gold, or platinum, and then present that to an employer, say, I've completed this coursework. And an employer could also conversely say, in their, say their job orders or, or in their postings, you know, gold certificate preferred, or, you know, come apply and, and make reference to that. We have not had as great a success as getting the business community recognized. I'm not saying it's at zero, but it, it's been, I call it a challenge to some degree to, to get the business, I'm not just saying here in Penalt, around statewide. However, I think we've come to the recognition that there's benefit to go through this from the job seeker standpoint.
Absolutely.
And so, we, that is one thing we are emphasizing in this modification, is instilling that in our service delivery model to the job seekers, and, and embedding that into the service flow, when somebody comes in, and then possibly when somebody exits, and, and driving that. The last I checked or heard, I think, say, in Maricopa County, there were, I think, a little over 600 individuals that had the, one of those certificates. And in Penalt County, I think there was one or two. But so, we are definitely looking to instill that. They, they kind of took it offline for a little bit and revamped the curriculum, and it just came up, we were just given a presentation about two weeks ago. And it was reauthorized, I think, from the governor's office. I think it's funded through the governor's WIOA funds that they get for another five years.
I think it should be a prerequisite to graduate from high school. I mean, I, I mean, really, that, that, because it, it is shocking, the, the perception of, I guess that's not the right word to use, but the workforce that's coming forth, you know, kind of has, doesn't have a real good idea about what's really expected of them. And that class really did kind of demonstrate what, what you're going to be expected of from, from an employer, at, at all different levels. I thought the curriculum back then was fantastic. I don't know what they would have done to change that. But I think that that's, that's one of the more important things to get people to, to work. And, because there is a lot of frustration on employers when they don't have even a common knowledge about what's expected of them.
100%.
Just an observation from me.
100% agree. And there is a aspect of that that has been introduced to some of the high schools around the state.
Oh, good.
So, and, and if you remember that diagram with all the squiggly lines on it and all that, one thing that Arizona at Work, you know, we do, we, we are part of other efforts in the community. You know, the Penalt Partnership has a Business Education Workforce Committee, which I sit on. Achieve Penalt is working with the schools, and, and so, it's definitely something we could, you know, introduce there and, and see what we can do to spread, because really, to build our workforce for what's coming, what's here now and what's coming, we really need to start in, in the K through 12 system. Somebody coming into our job center as a dislocated worker is probably already kind of has an idea of, you know, obviously, everybody can change, but they pretty have an idea where they're going and what they want to do. But there's a whole host of opportunity for folks that, you know, especially in that age range, in, in secondary schools.
I wonder if, if you could reach out to Rod Mccone with that and see if, make that part of his program as well.
And we can. And, and we partner with adult probation and even juvenile probation, but we can, it's a great idea, and we'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Sure. And this is just to, to show an alignment, our Workforce Development Boards, they went through some strategies and came up with three goals, and it developed three goal groups, which are on the left side there, what their focus is. And it's just a depiction of making sure we are still, that our Workforce Board is in alignment with what this, this plan is all about. So, this is, again, one of those to, to keep us in line and focused, and make sure we're in sync with ourselves. And I just wanted, this is just a, a quick depiction of what the next steps are as far as this modification approval timeline is. At some point, by next week, I anticipate to submit the draft of the plan to the Department of Economic Security, for them to run their eyes over it and kind of give preliminary approval. One thing I will let them know is that I did not want to bring the plan to the Board of Supervisors, have you approve it at some point, and then submit it to them, and then they have their two cents and have to bring it back. I'd like to get their approval upfront. And so, that's what that April 25th through June 25th timeframe is. Once board staff and our board get all of that cleaned up, we'll be presenting to you the final version for your, your approval, and we anticipate that in, you know, as you can see, in July. And then by August, give it to the Workforce Arizona Council for the final approval, and then the bottom And then the bottom line is we're starting to use the plan just to, we're not going to wait. So so that that's really, I just wanted to make you aware that's what's coming, that's what we're working on. Harold, I don't know if you want to, we didn't rehearse anything, but I just asked Harold to walk him so, but that's what I have, you know, where to find me if you have any questions and I appreciate the time to present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Chairman, Supervisors. Thanks for listening to this. This is this is a lot harder than I certainly thought when Tim Knievel came to me and said, hey, why don't you serve on this board? You know, I liked Tim Beck at that time, but I'm not so sure anymore. This there's so much effort that goes into this and so much that has to happen behind the scenes and you got a glimpse of that here today. It's a great board, a lot of business people are involved in it as well as staff and so forth. And as you go around the state and you look at these other 12 or the actually the 11 Arizona at Work groups, this is by far the best one. These this is a great group that this staff has put together and they work hard at it and it's been a it's been a pleasure and I'm sure that Tim is watching and guiding this in a little bit and too in some in some respects. So thank you all for supporting this. It's it's very worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you, Harold. Thank you, Mr. Chris. Appreciate it. All right, any other questions, any comments? All right, then we will, oh, we will move along here, let's see. Item number two is a presentation and update on the Penale County Emergency Operations Plan. Mr. Komet. Come on down.
Thank you, Chairman, Supervisors. Chuck Komet, Emergency Manager for the county. Joel is much more polished in dress than I am and has a much more interesting topic with regards to the county as it pertains to economic development. But what I'm here to talk about today is, in the event of a disaster or a big emergency for the county, how we can recover and get back to those good times that we are experiencing right now. So what I plan to do today is just provide the update for our plan and to give you especially, I was hoping Vice Chairman was going to be here as well, the three of you that weren't here when we did the original adoption of the 2016 plan, kind of an overview of what this plan is and what it isn't. And then from there, we will actually be presenting, should be next month, the actual plan for your review and actual approval and adoption. So we will get started. All right, so what is the Emergency Operations Plan? It really outlines how the county responds to an emergency overall. It is not about day-to-day operations. It's not about how the sheriff's office operates and does their things or about how, you know, fire departments do their stuff. It really talks about the strategic level of of what the the county is going to do, what the county's officials' roles and responsibilities are and how we organize and prioritize tasks. And then how county policies that we currently have in place are applied to those emergencies. For the history, like I mentioned, the last time it was adopted was in 2016. The county's been doing this and, you know, jurisdictions across the country have been adopting plans as such as these since the civil defense area era of the 50s. So who uses it? It really is our plan. It's applicable to all Penale County government departments, offices and agencies. It identifies those roles and responsibilities within county government and really how we interact with the state and then how we interact with our jurisdictions within. Who doesn't use it? The cities and towns. We don't dictate with this plan of what they're supposed to do. Through statute, cities and towns should have their own emergency management program or some sort of plan in place, whether that's a third hat for, you know, a police chief or a fire chief and their plan is on a napkin. You know, it all it has to do is is work with our plan, which works rolls up to the to the state's plan, if that makes sense. The like I said, it guides the coordination of emergency response efforts and resources for the jurisdictions.
Excuse me, do you do you work so, I mean, I think I know the answer, but does the county then work with the city or with the school district to, you know, have a drill to say, here's how we'll do this in the case of some emergency?
Yes, definitely. If a school district, for example, if they have their own plan, one of the things that we like to try to do is, you know, train to that with the public safety entities leading up to an exercise that may be just a tabletop one where we're just all sitting and talking through questions and having discussion to the actual full-scale exercise that you may see on TV, you know, on the news that goes on or post-imbute. We had a few years ago, we had at the Superior Court a couple of years ago where we had the active shooter scenario. It's that types of exercises that we would do.
Kids like to get out of class too, so.
Yes, very much so. Tribal nations, they may have their own plan. The tribes, obviously, with their sovereignty, have the ability to go direct to the state or go direct to FEMA if that, you know, pertains to them and if they choose to. Realistically, the tribes that we work with and that we partner with within the county, they work with us on different levels and we, again, don't dictate anything, it's just still more sharing of resources. And if we can do that for them, then we will. Or if we can support them with working with the state, then we will. So when is it used? Officially, it's the the time period when we recognize a threat or an emergency is going to occur or has occurred until we get into that transition period for recovery. And there are literal dates that get assigned to an emergency, whether it be the state that assigns it or the federal government that assigns dates of an emergency. There is an end start date and an end date, you know, and there are varying factors depending on what that actual emergency is. So what is an emergency? For the purposes of this plan, an emergency is an incident which requires immediate action by one or more county employees to prevent grave harm to people, property or the environment. And that is, again, just the general definition overall, but that does not mean that this plan dictates the day-to-day operations of, for example, the sheriff's office, like I mentioned. What are those limitations of the plan? Unless we note something differently within the plan, everything that this board has already adopted, whether it be county ordinance or resolution or by adopted policies and obviously federal acts, regulations and Arizona statutes, take precedence over the plan. This is merely to guide the county departments in how we operate in and function in an emergency. So our priorities, save lives, property and the environment. Number two is stabilize the incident. Number three, stabilize essential services. Number four, rapidly resume regular business and community services. And that's really where we want to try to get to, to what the public actually sees. And then number five, obviously, is provide accurate documentation and records, not just for us, but for the potential of reimbursement at the state or federal level. And we achieve these through what the county adopted several years back and all jurisdictions across the country have adopted the National Incident Management System and saying that this is how we're going to use these principles and these doctrines in running major events and major emergencies. But all emergencies are managed at the lowest level possible. So how we achieve them is we will commit all available resources and personnel should not hesitate to, you know, this is public safety personnel for the most part, should not hesitate to request resources. We want them to be able to manage the incident but also manage it safely. So that's why, you know, using the example of a wildland fire, sometimes when they talk about having 1,000 firefighters on a on a fire and you might be thinking, why do they have so many? It's so that way they can do it safely and cover the things that they needed to cover as far as the objectives of that event. And who does what? This is the big part and this is really something I want to make sure that you guys understand and county leadership understands is that this really, the authority and responsibility comes to the elected officials and the senior executives of the county. You're just delegating that authority and that responsibility to to us. So, you know, it's it's real deal. So who does what during an emergency? Routine delegation, direction, control and coordination, it's all, again, accomplished through the National Incident Management System and using the Incident Command system principles. So the incident commander is the person that's ultimately responsible for achieving the county's emergency response goals. And that could be for whatever incident may be. It could be, you know, when we had COVID or it could be for a wildland fire or it could be for monsoon storms or some other, you know, man-made event. They have that overall authority and responsibility for conducting the operations as well as directing on-scene activities. And that's delegated by elected officials and the executive officers of the county through established policies and procedures. So it's not always necessarily that you're meeting with somebody and you're saying, hey, I want you to do this, this and this. That's what this plan is doing ahead of time and saying, these are what we establish as our priorities for the county and they make that happen. And then during an emergency, we'll often have department operations centers where the departments of the county will come together and help manage their resources that they have for the event or resources that they may descend may need to send to the event or even to, you know, another location if it's asked for, like by mutual aid from under the jurisdictions. They do not actually go out and do operations and direct activities other than what is supposed to be for that particular department. So using the example of the monsoon storms, Public Works is sending their people out to go make sure that the roads are clear of debris and that they're able to pass through for, you know, public safety vehicles and for the general public. And they have, obviously, their overall authority and responsibility of their resources and their people. This all goes based off of the direction of the incident commander and what the objectives are. The Emergency Operations Center, you know, this often gets mistaken because it's one of those things that everybody kind of sees and it's that central place typically. It's a physical or sometimes virtual location where key county staff will gather to coordinate resources, to bring in and aggregate information and disseminate that information to to y'all, to senior leadership and or to the public. It does not manage and we're not in command of of operations of things. We really are a resource for those out in the field. And as I mentioned, the two primary roles, the provision and coordination of resources and that analysis and collection and dissemination of information. And the EOC operates under the authority and the direction of the county manager. It may be activated at any point when response capabilities are exceeded. So this plan, you know, may be a day-to-day thing, like I said, in that it's not dictating day-to-day operations, but this plan may be activated without anybody actually really knowing about it because we, you know, it is the plan of of how we all work together. But if there is an event that rises to a level to where we need more resources, we may activate the EOC in order to coordinate that. And then part of the EOC is the policy group and this provides overall strategic level management of emergency operations. And the primary responsibilities are to establish that strategic event intent, excuse me, encourage the cross-department collaboration and provide some policy guidance to the incident commander, to the EOC and to the department directors. And also provide some recommendations for you as the board if there is some action that needs to be taken by the board under your authority. It's chaired by the county manager and it will include elected officials and executive staff that are needed for that particular event. And as I said, it may recommend but does not actually approve policies or rules or regulations within the county. Now, there's the fun part, how do we pay for it? All purchasing policies and procedures still have to be followed. You know, when we activate and we have an emergency and we activate this plan, it doesn't mean that everything goes out the window. We still have to follow everything that we're supposed to do. Departments are responsible for funding emergencies using their normal operating funds, but in certain circumstances, additional funding may be made available by the Board of Supervisors. That's typically what you'll see when we talk about thresholds for state declarations or for federal declarations. I'll give you an example, what the formula that FEMA uses for a threshold for a state declaration and then a declaration for the county are two different numbers. For the county, per capita, it's $1.38, which ends up being roughly $1.75 million of what we should be spending before FEMA really feels that it's at the level to where the federal government is going to be reimbursing the county for their response efforts. And I haven't done the math real quick in my head. I do know that it is 1.75 million because I did did do that part. The $1.38 may be from previous years, so please don't quote me on that one. All right, so as I was just talking about, the county may seek reimbursement through the state or through the federal government, through their coffers. And definitely this is the time when we need departments to make sure that they are tracking their expenditures and providing that to the Emergency Operations Center so that way we can, you know, seek that reimbursement later. And it's a it can be a daunting task, you know, for sure, the staff that we've been using to do, you know, COVID reimbursement, for example, has just been hours upon hours of work that have been put in. And it wouldn't have been made possible without, you know, Public Works, without Public Health, without the sheriff's office and anybody that touched any part of COVID, you know, no pun intended, but, you know, anybody that had a hand in it realistically, that there may be some potential for reimbursement, you know, we needed those costs. And, you know, it gets down to the detail of how many miles you drove your car. During declared disasters, like I said, the county departments are responsible for their purchases and providing that information to the EOC and documenting and tracking that And what revisions have been made, what you'll be seeing in the plan when it comes forward to you in a few weeks is some extensive revisions from the basic plan and not all of the different annexes and different components that come of the plan. We really wanted to focus on paring down the the basic plan that we have and making it more functional and more flexible and, you know, easy to to operate and navigate. And then there'll obviously there'll be a list of those revisions on page seven of the plan. And with that, I'm done with my presentation. Can I take any questions? I told you, it's not as exciting as economic development.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Cabinet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned, you know, this plan is implemented to save lives and property. What's the minimum value of property that that would that would cause an incident response plan to be triggered?
We don't have a a number, a threshold number like when we talk about FEMA thresholds, there is no number for that. Really, when this plan gets activated or and or when the Emergency Operations Center gets activated would be when resources of the county or resources of a jurisdiction are exceeding what their normal operations would be. And at that point, it would be when when it happens, but not because there's, you know, one household affected versus 15, you know, for example. You know, if I can use wildland fire, you know, when we had the the Dudleyville, the Margot Fire last year, that was, you know, right up against the community, you know, we essentially were activating this plan and coordinating resources between fire, state fire, the sheriff's office and our office, and then bringing in other resources such as air quality and public works and public health. And that fire, you know, as you know, burned down 30 structures. But the Telegraph Fire, you know, a few weeks later, while it threatened the town of Superior and also threatened the community of top of the world, there were no, with the exception of a couple of outbuildings, our understanding, there were no actual structures that were lost. So there was that threat of it and that's where this actually happened. So it's not like a, you know, like I said, one house versus five or 15 or something along those lines.
And so the same is the same holds true for risk to life. So is there a threshold, risk to life threshold if one person is in danger versus 10? When does this when does this get implemented? You said earlier that when an employee responds to an emergency to save life or property, resources are initiated at the lowest possible level. Who can initiate this plan?
So at the lowest possible level would be would be the best example would be, you know, the deputy on the street or the, you know, the firefighter that's part of, you know, a four-man crew on a on a fire truck, you know, that is rural metro or. you know, a four-man crew on a, on a fire truck, you know, that is rural metro or, you know, regional or anybody else. I'm trying to not use jurisdictions since we're, you know, we're not dictating them. They're doing what they need to do. And in the course of saving a life, a single life, if they have resources that they don't have and they need assistance, this plan could be essentially activated. You know, I can give you, you know, taking another step forward in that is that for our office, we have a duty officer, someone that, of our staff that is on call twenty-four seven. We take shifts month after month. Before walking up here, I gave Wade my phone because the duty officer is forwarded to my phone right now. If Casa Grande Fire had a, a trench rescue or something like that, that they needed additional stuff from the valley or from down in Tucson or something like that, that they couldn't readily call and get, they may make that phone call to us. That is essentially activating all this, even though you're not seeing, you're not seeing the county logo get shone up in the sky like the Batman signal or something like that. So it's not, you know, a major event or may not be a major event, or it may be. You know, it could be something that could be day-to-day and you might see it about it or read about it in the news, or it could be, you know, a fire that makes national attention.
So that, so an individual deputy on the street can say, hey, we don't have the resources we need to handle this, get with emergency management, and then you would sort of implement the emergency response plan or incident command to make sure they have the, the items that they need. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Or in, in the same manner, if they already know the department that they need to get ahold of, whether it be housing or public health or, you know, any other department, you know, just like when they call on Public Works because they have a road closure and they call their off-duty person or their on-call person, excuse me, then it's essentially that same thing, but at the lowest level.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Goodman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, since I've been in office, there's, before COVID even hit, one of the things that I was impressed with was our emergency preparedness that we have because of the fact that, to your question and some of the statements and questions that you're asking, is that much of the public does not aware of, but there's a complete, once these plans are implemented, they do desktop type of analysis where they bring all of the fire departments, all the sheriffs, police departments, Public Works, they all get together and they have exercises, desktop exercises, and then even take it to the, to the level to where they come in and actually do exercises, physical type exercises, like we did a, the shooting at Poston Butte. We did the one at the courthouse here a couple, three years ago before COVID even hit, and then even on the fire responses with these things. And I'll tell you right now, with, with, with the coordination and everything that takes place at the desktop level, this is one of the reasons why we've had a really good response to some of these, like the fires and, and the, the floods that we've had. And so, you know, watching that firsthand and being a part, a participant in that as a Board of Supervisor and watching all of that, that was very helpful to me, even to the point where we could communicate that to the communities and make them assured that we're really on top of this type of stuff as a county. And even to that lower level to where our officers already are trained and understand where they go in these particular, I'm glad you brought up the incident or a scenario if there was a cave-in on one of the construction sites, how that would be all responded to. So I, I commend you and I, and I wholeheartedly one hundred percent into these type of programs that we're doing. So, thank you, Chuck.
I appreciate it, Supervisor. And if I may say on that, I want to make sure that, that y'all understand that, you know, our program, you know, emergency management, we're not the tip of the spear by any means. You know, we are way, way, way back in the end. You know, Chief Thomas and I will, will joke that we're the, you know, second or third responders kind of thing, and we really are there to make sure that we're supporting our public safety partners and then supporting the county as a whole. So we're in the, you know, in the background for sure, we're helping them, you know, with their assessments, and when we realize that there are gaps that we need for the county, we try to help them, you know, either through going after grants or just putting together mutual aid compacts and, and programs or other ways that they can get these, you know, these type of resources so that way they can effectively and safely do the job that they need to do. Because they're the ones that are really, you know, putting it out there and risking themselves, risking their lives for the county.
Well, thank you. Thank you, all your team and all you do.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay. Awesome. Thank you much.
Appreciate it. All right. Item number four, presentation and discussion of Penale County Employee Recruitment, Retention, and Total Compensation Updates and Recommendations. Oh, I'm sorry, I checked off too far. Sorry about that. Backup, number three. Let's go, let's go back here to the five, to the 2022 Five-Year Transportation Improvement Maintenance Program. Thank you for keeping me on track.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, County Staff and Leadership. My name is Tara Harmon. I am a transportation planner for the Penale County Public Works Department. I am here today to present to you the Draft 22 Penale County Five-Year Transportation Improvement and Maintenance Program. The program is the county's near-term transportation plan, our guide, if you will, that identifies projects in the current, upcoming, and following three budget years. The program, or the plan is a snapshot of the status of projects as of February of 2022, when the Transportation Advisory Committee recommended the proposed plan for approval by you, the Board of Supervisors. The program's three pillars are the funding, the plan, and the committee. The funding is provided from revenues generated from the half-cent transportation excise tax that was approved by Penale County voters during a special election in November of twenty, or of two thousand and five, excuse me. The tax will sunset in 2026. Public Works staff will seek to reauthorize the tax with a special election in 2024. Revenues generated by the tax are to support countywide roadway construction, reconstruction, and maintenance projects. The plan is a listing of transportation projects that are programmed over a five-year period. The plan establishes a tentative schedule and potential funding for completion of the county's transportation planning, construction, and major maintenance projects, and it is reviewed and updated annually by the Transportation Advisory Committee. The committee is a ten-member panel appointed by you, the Board of Supervisors, and charged with recommending the five-year plan. And I'm going to stop right here because before we go on, I'd like to acknowledge that our chairman of our current committee is with us today, Mr. David Garcia. Chair Garcia has served three terms on the committee, starting with his first appointment back in 2013. So if you'd like to stand up and kind of give a wave, Mr. Garcia. Thank you. As you know, two members represent each of the county's five supervisory districts. The committee meets each September, November, and February to prepare the recommendation. All meetings are open to the public and in compliance with Arizona Open Meeting Law, and the committee is governed by bylaws approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2010 and updated by the Board of Supervisors in 2018. Program funding. This chart reflects the revenue collected for the county's portion of the transportation excise tax over the last six years, with the expected total revenue for the remainder of fiscal year 2122 and the projected revenue for fiscal year 2223. The collected revenue has increased more than five point six million since 2017, 2018, and the budget staff expects a conservative one percent increase for their 2223 projections. Program priorities. The goal or priorities of the transportation program involve roadway safety, traffic flow, paved mileage, and economic development. Although roadway safety continues to be our primary focus, in the past few years, we have trended towards maintenance of our paved roads. The safety projects consist of adding improvements like guardrails, rumble strips, traffic signals, and conducting safety studies. Due to several county widening projects, traffic flow is improving, but it will need to be managed throughout the entire county as areas continue to develop. To address air quality mandates, paved mileage must increase on unimproved roadways that have an average daily traffic count of one hundred and fifty and greater. The county's elected leadership has made economic development a strategic priority, so we consider projects that support economic development. As you know, movement of people and goods is one of the determining factors when it comes to attracting new businesses and creating quality jobs. New projects. The plan is a night, a dynamic document with two moving parts, one being the new projects. The new projects are typically added annually to the fifth year of the plan. Transportation projects are received and accepted annually. These requests can be submitted by anyone and accepted via, and are accepted via email, mail, or online submittal. Those projects, requests submitted on or before September thirtieth of each year will be considered for inclusion in the fifth year of the program for the upcoming planning cycle. If the request is submitted after September thirtieth cutoff date, it will then be considered for the next planning cycle or budget year. What happens with these requests once they've been submitted? Once a project request has been submitted, it is reviewed by the appropriate district manager for eligibility. Eligibility is determined by criteria such as average daily traffic, maintenance and right-of-way statuses, drainage or utility conflicts. So does Penale County own the right-of-way? Do we have the potential to own the right-of-way? Is it within our maintenance system? Do we have any utility conflicts, drainage conflicts? If the project is eligible, eligible, it is then reviewed by Public Works leadership and given a score from zero to three in nine different categories. A few examples of these categories are project connectivity, reduced safety risk, environmental compliance, and county maintenance cost reduction. A cost to construct or to complete is then determined by county leadership and the district managers for each eligible project. Finally, all of the eligible scored projects are then presented to the Transportation Advisory Committee, and the committee is then tasked with prioritizing the projects, with one being of the highest priority. The committee considers factors such as the district managers and public work leadership reviews and rankings, the project details, and public input. And the top priority projects which fit within the project, proposed budget are recommended to include in the fifth year of the plan. So let's take a look at the plan. Here we go. I found this one. Let's take a look at the fifth year of the plan. This year, the committee is recommending twenty-two new projects totaling six point nine million, and two continued projects totaling four point two million for budget year 2526. They include five pavement preservation projects, one safety improvement, and eighteen paving or ARDP projects. This gives us four projects within Supervisory District One, five projects within Supervisory District Two, three projects solely within Supervisory District Four, seven projects within Supervisory, sorry, let me back up, three within District Three, seven within District Four, and three projects within Supervisory District Five. And we have two projects that are programmed countywide or within two districts, spanning two districts. The second part of the plan are the amendments or the updates made to the plan. Amendments are the administrative changes to the existing projects already programmed in the approved plan. This planning cycle, the committee is recommending a total of fifty-one amendments to the plan. The fifty-one updates include three projects that are being advanced, four projects continued, four projects canceled or reallocated, eight projects with cost updates, nine projects completed, and twenty-four projects with status changes. And a status change, that, that number sounds sort of high, but a status change is, for instance, the projects going from pending to programmed or from pending to underway or underway to complete. So now, let's take a look at our overall plan for this year. The 2022 Five-Year Plan. This show, this slide shows a summary of projects by budget year. In 2122, twenty-six projects total for a total of eighteen million. In 2223, we have twenty-three projects total with a total of twenty million. 2324, we have nineteen projects in a total of fifteen point four million. 2425, we have fifteen projects planned for a total of fifteen point six million. And in 2526, we have a total of twenty-four projects for a total of eleven point one million.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
How many, well, how much of those, those projects you've got going, they're based on what years, dollars?
The projects that we have going currently?
Mm-hmm.
Well, of all these projects, they're based on, so we program five years, five years out. So sometimes projects get combined, combined, so I can't really tell you what year projects they're based on. I could tell you, when you look at the plan, it will tell you where the, where it's budgeted annually and what year.
Well, I'm looking at, I mean, I see the dollars, like, you know, twenty million dollars, eleven million dollars, but if that's based on last year's numbers, it'll be, how much more this year with inflation?
Right.
Will some of those projects be able to be completed, completely, or will they be, let's see, value engineered and adjusted?
Understand. What, that's why if we, we go back a few slides and I said there were some projects that were, might have been reallocated or that they might have been canceled, and what that is, is sometimes we just don't have the funding, or maybe we don't have the right-of-way for a project. So then we would take the funding from that project that we didn't say have the right-of-way for and roll it into one of those projects that did have some inflation on it in the following year.
Okay.
That being said, this year, when we did program, we added a ten percent contingency to each project with the anticipation of the inflation.
Okay. Good, thank you.
So this is a look at the 2022 Five-Year Plan as it's shown regionally in each current supervisory district. The 22 plan update contains one hundred and seven transportation projects with a combined cost of eighty million dollars. We have a total of twenty-six projects in District One, twenty-five projects in District Two, eight projects in District Three, twenty-two projects in District Four, nine projects in District Five, and seventeen projects with, in multiple supervisory districts or So what do we do next? Starting tomorrow, the thirty-day public comment period will begin and continue until May twentieth. Penale County Public Information Officer Gina Salinas will issue a press release announcing the public comment period. Digital copies of the draft plan and comment forms are available to complete and submit on the county's website. After all comments have been addressed, we will come back and request final approval by the board at the June eighth regular meeting. So let me tell you a little bit now about our committee. This year, our committee evaluated twenty-two projects and two continued projects, recommending all twenty-four for the 2022 program. As you know, TAC members are appointed by you and each supervisory district for, in each supervisory district for a four-year term. This year, we started with a fresh committee who, after this planning cycle, will have three years remaining on their term. In February of this year, the committee approved the meeting schedule for the upcoming 2023 planning cycle. All meetings are held on Tuesdays in Florence at two-thirty and are scheduled for September twentieth, November twenty-ninth of 2022, and February twenty-first of 2023. Most of the September meeting will consist of open meeting law and program review. The November meeting is when the committee will review and evaluate the eligible new projects, requests, and project amendments. The February meeting will be the committee high point with the plan recommendation and election of officers for the next planning season. Before we wrap up, I'd like to remind everyone that the county's website, in particular, the transportation planning page, is a great resource for current information on transportation planning projects. The current five-year plan and the draft plan is available to view in print. The transportation project requests can be submitted through this website as well, and the TAC meeting agendas, minutes, and project status reports are all available on this webpage. So, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions, this concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I see one from Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tara, just a, real quick, back to the comment that maybe a project gets pushed back because we have not been able to get the right-of-way or whatever. Maybe the criteria before we go forward with these is they do meet all the criteria or, you know, because that, that gives an expectation that something's going to happen and, and, you know, you're not able to come through with it.
Right.
And that's not a good look, but it's just my thought that I had about what you said there.
Understand, and will consider that. Understand, and will consider that. I will point out that when a project does go through that doesn't currently have right-of-way, it's on the caveat that the right-of-way owners are agreeing to donate at that time. Sometimes by the time the project rolls around, we have new owners, they're not willing to donate, things like that happen.
And I can see how that could happen. But anyway, just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, Ms. Harmon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Now, we'll do number four. All right. Presentation and Discussion of Pinellas County Employee Recruitment, Retention, and Total Compensation Updates. Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Tracy. Just a tag team.
Good morning, Chairman McCorr, members of the board. I'm Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager, joined today by Randy Tracy, Interim Human Resources Director. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today about the state of our workforce. As is appropriate about this time every year, the purpose of this session is to both inform you and seek your guidance regarding our policies, our practices, and our overall total compensation strategies in order to help inform our budget development and set our priorities for the upcoming year. Additionally, this work session is intended to address Supervisor Kavanaugh's request for information regarding the county's turnover. In this work session, we will cover our current state, we will take a look back at what we have done from the perspective of lessons learned and what works, and then we will focus on where we go from here. All of this is presented with the goal of helping to ensure we recruit and retain the qualified and engaged workforce needed to serve our community in the most efficient and effective way possible. To set the stage, we thought it would be helpful to look at our employment landscape and the market situation in which we are currently expected to operate. We are facing unprecedented times in terms of inflation increases, our current unemployment rate, what is anticipated in both public and private sector with respect to salary advancements and increases in the coming year, the fact that the number of individuals working or seeking employment in the public sector is actually less than what existed before the pandemic, and then importantly, the voice of the employee. They are speaking louder than ever, seeking competitive wages, a good place to work, and an opportunity to grow. With this context in mind, we will take a look at where we sit here in Pinellas County. And I, to present that data for us, I'd ask that Randy Tracy come up and speak with you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, members of the board.
Randy Tracy, Interim Human Resources Director. So my part in this presentation is to give you a snapshot of kind of where we are currently, the data. Just an FYI, this is all based on effective March 31 data, so that's where we did the cutoff. Our first slide shows where we are currently. Obviously, these are moving targets, but as of March 31st, we had 1,491 employees. On the county side, 25 part-time employees and three temporary. The judicial side, 457, two part-time employees and 41 temporary. If you'll see down at the bottom, the number of positions, those filled and those are vacant. I do want to, as we go through this, put some of these numbers in context for you. That 387 vacant positions, that's both funded and unfunded. They're on the books as positions, but several of them are not funded. Right now, we're recruiting on an average 90 to 100 positions consistently, depending on the day and what position is open. So all of those 387 positions are not funded, and so we're averaging 90 to 100 positions being recruited at any one time. So, I just wanted to point that out to you.
Question real quick, Supervisor Miller.
Real quick, and I just, I know the answer to this, but it's more for the audience or the wide people watching. The judicial branch is not, there are not county employees, they're state employees. Is that the reason you have them split?
Yes, sir.
So that, I just try to, that comes up in discussions and debates constantly, and I'd just like to make it clear to everybody that we pay for state employees from, and in the whole budget process and what I've been battling up at the state legislature, this is a really good slide. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go on to the next slide. This basically breaks down for you based on the category of classification type. So as you see, the filled positions for administrative, administrative support professionals and so on, and it also shows you the number of vacancies in those particular classification types. Some are struggling more than others. Also, too, the context of some of these numbers is that we don't have that many, for example, paraprofessionals. So there may be some distinctions based on actually how many positions we have in that particular classification. The next one is our age by tenure. Now, there's some things I'd like to point out on this that we're really focusing on and looking at closely. By tenure, less than one year, you see those numbers there throughout, all the way over to 20-year tenured employees. If you look along the right side, our average employee age is 44.9 years. The national average is 42, so that's not far off. But one of the things we really want to focus on is that 4.3, under 25 years old. So those folks, the younger workers, we're not doing a good job of attracting younger workers at this point, which the concern is, you look at that next factor, is 33% of our employees are eligible for some form of retirement over the next three years. So as our workforce becomes eligible for retirement, and we're not bringing in a younger workforce to come behind them, we're looking at some serious concerns in the next few years. We're already seeing a spike in retirements. Obviously, we're in an unprecedented time in our workforce, and we're seeing a lot of early retirements. So that even makes that particular figure more concerning over the next three years. In our recruitment, this is something that my office works on day and night. This is something that we're focused on constantly. If you look in the percentage of qualified applicants, I want to put that in context, that 44.06% for '22, that's just the first quarter of the calendar year. Now, one of the things it does is it shows it's favorable for us, because when we distinguish between number of applicants and qualified applicants. So qualified applicants are those that met the minimum qualifications for the position and were moved forward to the department for consideration for an interview, right? So those are the ones that we really focus on. Now, we're not sure, once we project that out, because January and February are usually a really big recruiting month, so once you kind of project that out through the summer and some of our lower months, that 44% may not hold up towards the whole year. Those other numbers, '21, '22, '23 are for the full year. But what it did tell us, if you look at the chart, we have been doing numerous different types of strategies. I've mentioned in the past that we brought on Colleen Campbell from the private sector. She's had 20 some-odd years of talent acquisition experience. We want to learn from the folks that have that kind of experience, and she's been really working with her team on changing the way that we post our positions and putting our best foot forward, creating a benefit package. We used to just post the job description, and now we're really trying to make that nice and have a value package. She's also got a light seat for LinkedIn, so she's doing direct sourcing now for positions that we can't fill, reaching out to folks in those similar positions across the state to see if they're interested in Pinellas County. In fact, today, she's at a job fair at CAC. Now that the economy's kind of opening back up, we're getting back out there, so she's trying to get out there and do the branding. What has happened through all of those efforts is we're seeing more applications, we're also seeing more qualified applicants, but the number I want to point out is that 102 down there on that bottom baseline, you see that, 102? This is our primary concern. We are hiring a lot of people, but we're losing more. Our new hire class this last time was packed, wall-to-wall, one of our biggest classes, yet we're losing more people than we're hiring, and we're not being able to catch up. If we hire 20, we lose 25. If we hire 30, we lose 35. And so those are the concerns that we're seeing, is that we hire a lot of people, but we're just not retaining enough to keep up with the growth of our workforce.
Did I see someplace that the loss of employees was something like 15.8%? Was that?
Yes, and that's going to be on one of those slides.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Would it be appropriate to interject a question as we go along? Is that the way you prefer?
Sure, absolutely. I'm open.
So, I'd ask for a turnover by department to help identify where the turnover is occurring and why, and if we identify that, perhaps apply resources. Is there going to be a slide for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then this one, I see the lines for hires. Is there a, do you have numbers on offers that are rejected?
That is an excellent question, sir. Mr. Chair?
Please.
We talked about that in our office even yesterday. Unfortunately, we don't have data on that. If you understand the way that the process works, once we qualify applicants, we send them to the departments, they go through the process independently, do the interviews, make the offers, and then we find out who they hired. So there's no mechanism right now, because it's very dependent on the department to notify us about that, so we don't have that data. We talked about that yesterday, about how can we start collecting some of those anecdotal issues. Now, I can tell you personally, in my department, for one of the positions I tried to hire, the first three rejected the offer, the best offer that I could make. So, and then one of them was actually hired and then called the Sunday before new hire and said they got another job making more money. So I can only speak for what's happening in my department, but I'm sure that that's a common occurrence across the county.
And another question with respect to a former slide, you said the positions are unfunded. Are they unneeded? Do you have an opinion on that?
I don't believe that that's the case. At the department level, oftentimes a strategic, you know, whether you're going to fund it, I have two that are on my books that I'm going to ask for funding next fiscal year. They've been sitting there, the workload has increased, now we know we need to fund them. So a lot of this could be just professional strategy as to when you fund it, when you need it, how you need it. I don't know that the need is the problem, it's just, it's sitting on their books, they know they're going to need it in the future, and then they're going to ask for funding at some point.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, so the next slide is retention. So our retention numbers are interesting, and the next few slides, we'll talk about retention. We're seeing some different trends that we've not seen in the past, that is the heart and soul of this particular presentation and some of the strategies that we're going to look for in the future. If you see in the one-year to five-year, we're at 29.2%. That is a different statistic that we've seen in the past. So we'll see in our next slide that that has been decreasing significantly over the last few years, is that people are leaving at a specific time in their tenure and career, and that one is one of the very concerning numbers that we're seeing. Now, some good news is on the right side. You'll see that the top three reasons that people stay with Pinellas County, these are surveys we've sent out through our exit interviews as well, that they say they like their coworkers, they enjoy working with the public, and they enjoy the teamwork that occurs at Pinellas County. And so we look at these types of things as to what keeps people here so that we can maximize that, know what our strengths are, and really, you know, provide resources to increase those things. The statistics below that are national level, come from SHRM. So to compare us to the national level, why people stay at their jobs, number one, across the country is pay, number two is working conditions, which, that speaks to those three things above, and developmental opportunities. So just wanted to see, let you see what our county says versus what the national data This next slide is a collage of our total rewards. This is everything that we're doing currently for our employees, and it captures a litany of things that we're doing, that we provide, and that you invest, as a county, into our employees currently, and how it all adds up. If you look at those numbers across the bottom there, we are investing. We are investing in employees. Obviously, in this climate and in this workforce, we're going to have to consider some new strategies, but right now, we are investing in our employees, and we should be proud of that package. I won't go through each and every one of them with you, but it is a, it is a good total reward package. Turnover, this is the one, Mr. Chairman, you were speaking of, is our turnover. Now, I will point out that involuntary turnover in retirement, those things we really can't control, to be honest with you. There's always going to be some involuntary turnover, folks that just don't fit into the organization or to that particular role. And retirement, that's what we're all working towards, right? So, the one that we can control and that we want to focus on is the voluntary turnover. Those that we want to keep, those employees, our high performers, folks that we want to keep employed at the county, that's the number that we focus on significantly. And if you see the forecast for '21, '22, we are looking at a 15.33% voluntary turnover rate. That's pretty high compared to what we've done in the past. We've normally been 10 or lower. At this rate, we're working at 15 to 33. Our total turnover forecast is 21.75%. So that's including with retirement, involuntary and voluntary. Pretty significant numbers. To answer your question, Mr. Supervisor Kavanaugh, this is some turnover by department or office, so the courts, general government, health, legal, sheriff, and then all others, we see what the kind of the turnover ratios are. And those are voluntary resignations. Again, we specifically focus on those that we can try to impact, so that breaks those down based on those general categories. More specifically, I have fingers today. We're currently averaging 25 resignations per month compared to 14 per month in the last two fiscal years. I will tell you, March was a really significant month. We had 34 voluntary resignations just in that month, which was the second highest we've had since we've been collecting data. So we are, we are turning over a significant number of our staff every month. 79% of those are regrettable turnover. Those are folks that we wanted to keep, that we really wanted to keep here employed. That's a big number. It's not just, you know, underperformers, attitude issues, these are folks that were our high performers, and we're trying to keep them. If you look at your turnover tenure, by tenure on the right side, that was what I was referencing earlier, is where people are leaving has been decreasing in years down to now 5.5 years. So that's our pain point. When they're hitting at the five-year mark, they're starting to leave, and we see in the next few slides maybe why that is. Cost of turnover. In this particular case, retention is way, way cheaper than trying to replace employees. These numbers are based on national averages. Our average salary here at Pinellas County is $56,000. If you take national averages for costs to replace, you can see what our costs are going to be to replace the number of people that we're losing on a consistent basis. to be to replace the number of people that we're losing on a consistent basis. So retaining our knowledge, historical knowledge, retaining our departmental knowledge, the training costs, it takes time to get proficient at your job. It takes weeks to become proficient, and then we lose them. There's a super, super big cost to that. So we've been capturing exit interviews. Again, I'll try to bring context to this. Exit interviews, when somebody leaves, is a voluntary act. So everybody that leaves does not provide an exit interview. This accounts for 17% of those that left over the last three years. So a lot of folks don't want to burn bridges, or whatever the reason, and they just don't provide an exit interview. So this only accounts for 17%, okay? I just want to put that in context. But the top three reasons folks said that they left Pinell County, number one was salary. Number two was supervision and management. Now, I'll put that in context as well. If they say something in the exit interview that is actionable and they've made a specific complaint, HR does conduct an investigation to try to avoid a constructive discharge issue, and we want to also correct it in the department. Some people just make general comments, "I don't like communications," or "I don't believe in the direction that the leadership is going." So a lot of the things they say under that, when they mark that as a problem, are not actionable. Other issues too is though, it's a numbering system, so if they mark one, they may not even leave a comment. So a lot of that we can't fix. But those that do say things that are specific or in any way actionable, we either look into it ourselves, or we contact the department to see if we can address those issues as to reason they left. And then finally, the number, third thing is lack of advancement opportunities. So that was some concerns that they expressed. On the right side, here's getting down to some of the root causes that we think this is happening. So if you look at, and I'll just jump down there, it takes nine years to get to the midpoint of the range at Pinell County. Nine years. That's a long time because our ranges are set based on market value at the midpoint. So that's how much that job is. If you look down there at the explanation, the market range is for an employee who is fully competent, that can perform that task, they should be at mid-range, right? So it's taking nine years to get somebody to the midpoint. We haven't had a mechanism to move them forward other than the COLA raise each year. And so we believe that that is a contributing factor. If you look at the stat above that, 61% of full-time employees that are resigning are in grade seven and below. So some of our entry-level positions are where we're having some of our hardest problems. And 89% of the employees resigned had a salary below midpoint. Now, what we conclude from that is once an employee has been here and reached the midpoint or higher, those are the folks that tend to stay with us. And so those that are not at the midpoint, at the lower ranges, are the ones that we're tending to lose at this point. Questions?
Supervisor Millar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to focus on, personal reasons can be, I've got to go back to Ohio to take care of my mom now. I got, you know, there's just things that we couldn't fix because it's their, you know, they prioritize their life, and those are things that they need to do.
Absolutely, sir.
I guess the one thing, and I brought this up in other discussions, how many of them are gravitating to loss that are going from the public sector to the private sector? Private sector right now is paying way better than the public sector in all levels. And I don't know, that may be a more difficult one, and may be one of the reasons they don't do the exit interview as well. I mean, we know that the need for employees is across the board, both in private and public sector.
Yes, sir. We're competing with everybody.
Yeah. So just observations.
Any other questions?
So that's pretty much the state of where we are. So I think at this point, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Shepherd to look at where we need to go from here. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Goodman.
You know, and thank Mary Ellen and Randy for bringing a lot of these things to our attention. The one thing on one of the previous slides, it showed exactly how much we spend annually on EREs for employees in that average range of $54,000, $55,000 a year. And when you factor in another $18,000 for benefits and EREs, and then in addition, if it's a family, it's even more than that. It goes up to $80,000 is what is, and I think we could do a better job of communicating those type of benefits, what additional benefits the employees realize as being employed by the county, as, you know, they're not going to get those, in some cases, they're not going to get those kind of benefits in the public, in the private sector.
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Goodman, your point is very well taken. As Randy was talking about, the efforts undertaken for recruitment, that is one of the things they are profiling, is in fact how rich our total compensation package is, particularly in the area of healthcare. We also recognize we have to do a better job of communicating to our existing employees who aren't aware of the rich package that we're providing to them. So we're exploring ways for employees to have access to the value of their total compensation.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the board, before we leave the current state, we wanted to give a brief overview of what we understand our competitors and our competitors are doing in this current environment. And literally, everything but the kitchen sink is being thrown at ways to recruit and retain employees into the public sector. Based upon information that we've received from the County Managers Association, and one of the members also had access to the City County Managers Association, all organizations are considering fairly comprehensive strategies and interventions to address compensation issues. Most are proposing salary advancements ranging from flat dollar amounts, a dollar or $2 an hour increase up to 10% increases. And these, again, these include both cost of living and merit-based adjustments, but those are only the beginning. They have introduced hiring bonuses. I'm, we're aware of recently, both Maricopa and Pima counties have introduced paid parental leave, one-time incentive pay, similar to what we recently did, professional assignment stipends where paid for special skills or assignments that require greater contributions from the employees, alternative work schedules. And we aren't talking traditional 980s or occasional 410s. We are talking four-day work weeks, vacation leave accruals in terms of the amount of time accrued and how it's used and when it's used, recognition leave, flexible leave. When county is able to, an employee does an outstanding job, they have the ability to give that employee a day off in recognition of that work. Salary grade and step plan adjustments. Many of the other counties are looking at their whole structure as well, and modifications needing to be made reflective of the changing employment landscape. Remote and hybrid work options, as you are all aware, are a hot topic, and all of our competitors, competitors are looking at those as well. So that summarizes kind of the current state. So we wanted to, before moving forward, take a look back. What have we learned over the last year specifically? And that is the great resignation reshuffle is alive here in Pinell County. Randy stated really highlighted that in terms of the turnover we're experiencing. And then the messaging our employees are giving us is consistent with the messaging around the state and around the country. Employees care about competitive salaries, flexibility, work cultures, and that will keep employees here. Solutions that focus on department needs and are responsive to the voice of the employee are having a positive impact. That's a critical lesson learned over the course of the last year. And if you'll allow me, I want to break from speaking because I don't want it to be HR's voice you're hearing today, because candidly, we exist to serve the offices and departments who directly serve others. So I'd like to step aside and ask, I've asked Randon Riffey to be here today. I've asked him to come up and speak about what has worked for his office based upon the policies and capability this board approved for us to respond to some of these pressures.
Good afternoon, or good morning, Mr. Riffey. Good afternoon, Chairman McClure, members of the board. With Mary Ellen's introduction, it makes it sound like things are going well, and they are going well. But the story I have to tell was one of a crisis that we had been in, in Fleet Services late 2000, a good part of 2021, or 2020 and 2021. We were in a full-blown crisis, especially in our light-duty technician area. We had seven employees. At one point, we were down to three for two or three months. And we talk about these soft costs and the hard costs of attrition. I'll point out a couple. On the soft side, when a situation like that happens and you're down roughly 60% of your employee base, everything in terms of continuous improvement, project management, things like we were working on were policy and procedure development, training, it all comes to a stop because everybody is focused on just getting in our area cars out the door. So there's those soft costs that sometimes are easy to dismiss, but they're really real, and they set us back for probably a year in some of those specific areas. In terms of the hard costs, we probably spent over that 12-month period as we were struggling with that, I don't know, $75,000, $80,000 in outside services because we just simply didn't have the bandwidth to deal with all of the, obviously, we prioritize PCSO, and a lot of the non-PCSO work was outsourced at a higher cost than we would pay internally. So in working with Mary Ellen and her team, we were able to get to a point where we got some relief. And that relief has been in effect for probably six months now. Our turnover has been stabilized. We're down only one right now. And we have good hopes of being able to find an additional employee to fill that. The work satisfaction is much higher as we've got employees in a strong team that's working well together. And see some of the things that we talked about, there is real value among the employee base of these non-salary-based compensation. And I, we've seen that same need in Fleet to be able to have the need to explain to employees, this is the total cost, total compensation package. And it's had, it's made a difference in cases of people considering leaving. I guess the two or three things that I'd like to emphasize are the need for us, as we did with Mary Ellen and her team, to be flexible in choosing some, addressing the market conditions as they come up. Ours was really unique. I think there were some other departments that were struggling similarly, but not all departments were going through that. So being able to adjust to changing market conditions and be able to do it rapidly so that we don't lose those good employees. I think the other thing that we enjoyed was a greater flexibility and movement within that salary range, which in our experience has been really, really difficult. We had some breakthroughs over the last couple of years in getting individuals. We ended up bumping our light and heavy-duty mechanics up by one grade, which helped tremendously. But having that additional flexibility within the salary range gives a manager, supervisor, a tremendous amount of capability to retain good employees. And that's the last thing that I'd like to leave you with. And then that, that we don't have quite yet, but hopefully do, and I'm passionate about, is having some sort of a base-plus incentive program that would help us retain those high-quality employees that we see want, have a career with, with the county. And right now, we don't have that. And it causes some challenges with respect to motivation in my experience. So that's a little bit of story from the Fleet Service. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Riffey? Good. Don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randon. Randon spoke to the value of having money set aside, which is something this board did, which allowed us to be responsive to market changes and then move individuals in the range consistent with that market in order to retain individuals. I'd like to ask Mr. Volkmer to speak on the other piece of what the board approved in this year's compensation plan, and that was a critical recruitment and retention response that allowed us to be flexible in terms of hiring and retaining.
Good morning, Mr. Volkmer.
Good morning, Board, for a couple more minutes. Ken Volkmer, Pinell County Attorney. Much like Mr. Riffey said, things are much better here than they are elsewhere, but that doesn't mean we are where we need to be. Let me give you a very quick example of some of my colleagues. Brad Carline's in Navajo County. Their county stayed roughly the same size since he first became county attorney about 14 years ago. He had 19 attorneys that worked for him when he started. He has eight. They can't find attorneys. They cannot, at the salary that that county is willing to pay their attorneys, they cannot bring people there. Think about Sholo, Pine Top, some of these communities. It's expensive to buy a home there. It's getting expensive to buy a home here. Maricopa County's attorney's office, by comparison, they have approximately 70 open attorney positions. Seven, zero, 70. They cannot fill those positions. By contrast, I think we have two. So we have done some things that have been very good for us. But there's stuff on the horizon, and it's because of the flexibility that this board has provided to the county management team, to the HR team, that we've been able to do different things. You know, Chris has had a heck of a time with the Civil Division. The problem is, if you leave Chris's, and I hate to say this publicly, but if you leave Chris's shop and you go private, you're going to get a $50,000 raise. So it's very difficult to convince particularly mid-career people to take a $50,000 haircut to come work for the county. Now, they have worked on some really interesting incentives. We've been actually luring people that are in retirement to come back and working part-time. We have, you know, given some flexibility with scheduling. What we're doing right now is we're actually working in a way that we can maybe give part-time employees some kind of benefits. Because again, if you're at that maybe 55 to 65, you're in your prime earning, prime working career, but you may have been able to retire, but now you've got to front your healthcare bill. I can tell you, when I was in private practice six years ago, my monthly healthcare bill just to pay for my premiums was $1,800 bucks a month. So, you know, it's a big hit. I can only guess what it is now. Obviously, it's a family plan with three little boys. But what we're doing is we are creating kind of unique packages. The other thing that this board has done that has been incredibly helpful is you've given them the power and the authority to authorize going up to certain amounts and not to make us take every decision before the board. You know, Supervisor Kavanaugh, for example, you said, well, how many are being outright rejected? There's not a ton of rejections. We do get some, but quite frankly, there's sometimes we don't even make the offer. If I look in there, they may be my number-one candidate, but if their salary demand, for example, is $100,000, in the midpoint's $80,000, we don't even bother. There's no way we're going to get them. But more frequently, what we see happen is we make the offer and they negotiate back. You know, my chief deputy loves to say he feels like he's getting nickel and dimed all the time, so like, what about this package? What about this? That's what we're really seeing a lot of. If we went back to when I first started five years ago, every time, we'd have to go back for the board and say, hey, we want to bump this person up to here. And it became really counterproductive. Giving Leo, giving the county management team, giving HR the ability to say, yeah, that's fine, has really enabled us to make very quick decisions. Because I think, I believe, somebody said earlier, a lot of the candidates that are our number-one candidate are number-one candidates in two or three or four other jobs. It's not like they're only applying to us. And the quicker we can get back to them, they'll take that job because they like the security. Trying to just go through a couple of these different things. Some of the, I guess, out-of-the-box things have been really helpful for us as well. And I would certainly encourage the county and I would encourage this board to really empower our management team and our HR team. You know, Ms. Campbell, I think, was mentioned earlier. It used to be just a dry, this is the job duty, there's nothing there. Now they're actually doing videos, you know. Chris, whether that scared him off or not, I don't know. But Chris was able to do a video saying, hey, this is what it is, and it really kind of personalizes that. We're not going to the traditional. I mean, we've gone out and actually sought out people, and we've reached out to other departments and other counties and said, hey, do you have anybody? We've gone to some of the more traditional public sector, almost job fairs, if you will, really getting that information out. So we've really kind of switched up, but we need to do that. Because this is the reality. Our county is growing. The needs that we have today are different than the needs we had yesterday. And as we continue to bring these businesses and as we continue to bring more jobs and the duties that are being brought upon us are continuing to grow. I'm not speaking for them, but I know Doug's behind me here. I promise you, Doug will get up here and say, yes, there's more work for him than there's ever been before because as we continue to grow, his shop has to naturally expand. And what's happening is our offices are not expanding at the same rate that the people coming in are. So every year, we're getting a 3% increase in our residents. 3% of people are coming in, in addition to what we had. We're not seeing a corresponding 3% growth in every one of our offices every year. So what's happening is there's more responsibility put on the shoulders of our employees, which is fine, there's nothing wrong with that, but we've got to find a way to attract the best. We can't have run-of-the-mill employees. We can't, the people that we're able to hire at the bottom quarter or at the starting pay aren't the people that we need to be able to plug and play. Those are the people that we're going to have to coach up. You know, I think it was mentioned, two or three weeks to get them competent. Sometimes it's six months, it's a year, it's two years to get them competent. And what we start to see is, once we get them to a really good level, right at that five-year level where they're really producing and they're giving us a great return, we're starting to lose them. Some of the stuff that Mary Ellen and her team has been willing to do that's been helpful for us is we've been able to identify very important people in our office. And when they say, hey, I've got an offer, I'm leaving, we're able to very quickly counter it. Now, there's a couple employees, unfortunately, we've had to let go. They're the ones we regret, but I can never meet some of those demands. But there is some ability now to be flexible, to say, hey, what would it take? You know, I can think of a couple of different attorneys that we have been able to actually hold on to that, again, four years ago, we would not have been able to because the team wasn't empowered to do that. So that critical retention, and they really, it requires that you have faith in your electeds and you have faith in your department directors. There's just no way to get around that. Because there has to be some ability to trust me when I say, this is an important person. And I know historically, that's been difficult for the board as a whole because there has been a history of favoritism. I wish I could tell you that's not the truth. But I'm going to tell you all a secret, and you should know this. My favorite employees are my hardest-working employees. I like them because they produce. I like them because I don't have issues with them. So, you know, there has to be a certain trust that I can reach out to Mary Ellen, that I can reach out to the HR team, and I can say, this is somebody we can't lose. And if we identify them, we have to be able to have a package to keep that person in. And that's been very, very successful. Again, I think we have two open spots, but I think they're going to be filled right now. Otherwise, we're completely full. And to my knowledge, I believe we're the only county attorney's office in the entire state right now that's able to do that. I will tell you one thing that scares me to death, though. I say all of this great stuff. Pima County just got a fairly significant raise. I know the MCAO is requesting a 19% raise across the board for all their attorneys. Let me say that again. The requesting, 19, Maricopa County Attorney's Office.
So that'd be $72,000 for a starting attorney?
Correct. Which is, you know, what we pay somebody that's been here for three or four years. But if it goes all the way up, it gets very dangerous. So now, that's not been passed, but that is what we're talking about. Those are the drastic steps that others are making. So we are looking at all kinds of alternatives. And what I would encourage this board to do is to allow us to continue to explore those alternatives. I'll just tell you, as a complete aside, when I came in, I'd never worked in government before. And I really started reading about organizational psychology and various things. And I came across a series of studies that were saying, hey, if you have less than a 40-hour work week, if you can get to 32, maybe 36 hours of work, you actually get the same production and the same quality out of your employees in less time because there's so much wasted time during the day. Back then, I came in, boy, I was rearing, I thought I was going to give that, I was like, I'm going to knock this down. Everybody's only going to work 32 hours in my office. There's no ability right now for us to even have that flexibility to allow people to work less. I would really like us to consider and start seeing if that's an availability. It should be production-based, it shouldn't be time-based. Because if you're sitting in my seat doing absolutely nothing, playing solitaire or tweeting or, you know, playing a game on your phone, what value is that? The real test should be production-led. And I can tell you, I'm laying the foundation, because I'm going to come back here in a month, and I'm going to ask you to give me the ability to hire somebody who's going to help me start making some of those assessments. Because I think as a county, we need to start coming up with creative ways. We're, to your point, Supervisor Miller, we're never going to be able to pay the private sector. That's never going to happen. You know, we've talked about this before. When the market's going great and the economy's booming, nobody wants to work for the government. The second we see a recession, everybody floods to the government. And we've got to make sure we right-size things. But there are other things we can do other than money that can keep people, that can attract people. And I would just encourage this board to empower the county management and their team to explore all these various options and not hamstering us because we need to be flexible. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to your point, Kent, what you described is meritocracy, which I am fully in support of, and which is difficult, though, in the public sector. I mean, that's where, you know, productivity, if, and this just goes throughout all of government entities, you know, everything from the Development Services to the Assessor, to the Treasurer, to the whatever. We can't allow it to be on a per, the recorder. You get paid so much for every document you record every day, you know, and then you know how much it is. But back to your productivity thing, and I do think that there are people that should escalate probably in scale because of their productivity faster up the step system or however you want to describe it, because they are productive, they're very productive. And, but that, to translate that into the public sector, governments, counties, cities, school boards, school districts, I mean, has been the challenge of society forever. And so if somebody can come up with that great formula, I'd love to see it. I want to, and I'd like to try and find something that maybe does work for us in all departments that we do reward productivity because that's what's made America great, actually. And so those are my thoughts. But, and I understand your frustration.
Chair, if I could respond very briefly?
Please.
I want to be clear, I'm not suggesting that we're in some widget-making contest. I'm not suggesting that we say, okay, I expect you to do this, this, and this. But here's just a cold reality. Right now, I have no ability to truly assess whether I'm getting good value out of my employees. Like, there's no mechanism, there's no, for lack of a better term, an audit or an efficiency. I believe the two terms that Supervisor Kavanaugh and Supervisor McClure, I think, last session talked about is sort of an efficiency audit, some way to look at those type of things. That's what I'm really looking to do. I want to be able to see, look, the reality is, people could not be working hard, and they could pull the wool over my eyes. Or there's somebody who could be absolutely busting their hump, and I'm not properly recognizing the work that they're doing because it's really difficult on some of these because we don't make widgets. But what I'm saying is, we as a county really should be looking at efficiency. This is Kent speaking. Everybody else may completely disagree with me. But I like the private sector, the meritocracy, I like that. And what I'm saying is, we need to do a better job of assessing who are those that are doing more work and should be rewarded. Right now, we can't do that. Right now, I've got a gut feeling, and I'll tell you, I'm right 90% of the time. That means 10% of the time, I'm wrong. It means 10% of the time, I think I've got a great worker who's actually not. Or I've got somebody who I think is maybe less than desirable. And when they leave, because I thought, oh, they're not a big deal, I realized, boy, I was off the mark. What I'm asking for as a manager of 140 employees is, I would love to have somebody that can assist us, some process to assist us. That's what I think this county's missing. Again, that's Kent speaking, that is not on behalf of anybody other than myself.
But that 90%, you could be the head honcho of a large law firm and still have that same problem. You could say, you know, my gut feeling is, this guy's good, this one isn't, and you might be completely wrong. That's the risk we take. If we're good at it, if we're good at it, we usually accelerate. But, yeah, and I use the widget thing all the time. We're not making widgets. We have to have somebody at the recorder's desk every day to make sure that somebody walks in, wants to record a document, there's somebody there. There may be somebody that comes in, wants 200 documents tomorrow, and there may be nobody comes in and gets a document. But we better have somebody at the window, so.
Thank you. And Mr. Volkmer, just for the record, you talked from the morning into the early afternoon.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me the privilege of having others speak about this important topic. We have others' examples of success. I want to share one other real quickly in the interest of time, and that is the Clerk of the Superior Court. And the reason I want to share Ms. Padilla's story is because it reflects another strategy that we introduced this year, or expanded this year. With the Clerk of the Superior Court, we did the market upgrades to make sure that we were competitive. But we did a movement in the range to make sure people were appropriately placed. But what we did specifically is we created jobs that are aligned with where applicants are, no matter the stage of their career. So we created a trainee or an entry job where someone without experience, but with the character we want for county employee, could come in and learn and grow. Then we created a higher-level job where someone who had achieved an expertise in their field and had demonstrated that could promote to and further serve our community. In creating a opportunity, which earlier in the slides you heard that spoken to, is that that's what employees want. They want a place to grow a career. And that's what we did in the Clerk's office. This was just implemented the beginning of this calendar year. Since this was implemented, 298 applications have been received. 167 of those met minimum qualifications. There have been five rehires and five new hires. To give that context, in all of last year, there were 229 applications and only seven hires. It's working, what you have supported, and hopefully you've heard from others, people other than myself, that that's the case. So we want to thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject a couple of questions? Sorry, I know you're
Yes, go ahead.
While you're talking, I have a couple of questions. And this perhaps may be for Mary Ellen or for Randy, but we do exit interviews, but do we do exit interviews after the employees have left and they're on their new jobs, 90 to 100 days, to maybe get a more accurate response?
And Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, no. We do not do, we do the exit interview at the time an individual is leaving. We are not currently doing a follow-up interview after the fact.
Do we survey our employees from time to time, say, quarterly, to measure what their feelings are before they reach the point where they're walking out the door?
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, again, an excellent question. We, the answer is a yes and a no. But I'm going to lean more on the side of no because we don't do it consistently. What we do do is do a survey of our new hires. We do a check-in, how was their experience in coming on board? And then we do a six-month check-in to see how their experience has been at that point in their tenure. We also, when we had the relationship with Dr. Church, we did employee satisfaction, employee engagement surveys, and obtained information there. We are currently doing a project to get the voice of the employee.
Can we do Is that with a contractor, or can we do that internally?
This one is being done through an external group. But what we recognize, and I think this is, if I'm understanding your question, what we recognize we need to do is what's called a stay interview. That's capturing what an employee's experiences at various stages in their career, what is, what are the reasons they're staying, and what may be the pressures that they're experiencing that may cause them to think about leaving so we can intervene early.
And you and I and County Manager Lou have talked for the last year about changing culture and improving culture here in the county. Has there been any efforts to change interactions among employees to improve leadership skills and so on?
In response to that specific question, what have we done to improve culture? So we have brought in external trainer to, and focused our attentions on directors and how to create a positive customer experience, understanding that the customer isn't just our external customers, but very much our internal customers, our peers, our subordinates, our employees. So that effort was initiated. And a part of where we go from here, we're speaking specifically about reviving the core culture work. And the beauty of that work is it was based upon employee input. So we don't sit in the management suite and decide what's best or what employees want, that we collect their voices and have them help drive what our priorities are in our future.
And real quick, going back to the four-day work week, I think that might be a good idea. It would potentially, you know, you could reduce heating and cooling costs. However, the state law requires some offices are open five days a week, so. So I think that's something we should consider moving. We have many employees on flex. Some are, some are, you know, why am I on flex, why am I not on flex? But if we move that direction, I think it'd be a good idea.
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, thank you for those thoughts and suggestions. Quickly, I will move on, and it's where do we go from here? It's expand upon what works. We've, you've heard mention the employer branding, the recruitment efforts, the energy behind our job descriptions, putting a face to Pinellas County, clearly capturing the benefits so we can better communicate what we have to offer so we attract people to come be a part of our amazing team. As well as getting out there, not just on paper, but fortunately, post-COVID, we can get out there and we can connect and engage with potential applicants. The job fairs, and the other thing that, and I was appreciated hearing Joel speak about workforce, because partnering through internship programs, co-op programs, career fairs, again, getting out in the community. We need to continue to look at what you were speaking to, Supervisor Kavanaugh, flexible work schedules, remote hybrid options. The third bullet is the generous paid vacation time. And I do want to speak to this because we will be coming back to you specifically on this issue. Currently, we offer two weeks paid vacation when someone is newly hired on. We are sorely inadequate with respect to leave time when compared to the other counties and cities. So we know we need to address that. Time is as important as money to many people, is another lesson learned. Pay parental leave, we have two counties that just approved this, as I spoke about earlier. Mr. Volkmer spoke about part-time opportunities. That's just increasing the options available to the potential workforce and then continuing our wellness initiatives. Compensation, so here's where the rubber meets the road. We are Compensation. So here's where the rubber meets the road. We are tentatively set aside in the budget, 6% across-the-board increase, because we needed to set some starting point. But this is where we need your guidance. As we spoke to, we know the other, our competitors, private sectors, are putting money into employee salaries. We also know the impacts and pressures of inflation. So we need some guidance around how to set the budget with respect to across-the-board increases. But we also know that this isn't the be-all, end-all. We have to continue to address the kinds of things we did with Fleet, the Clerk of the Court, with the County Attorney's Office, with the Sheriff's Office, addressing market grades, critical recruitment and retention, merit pays, and equities, et cetera. So we're seeking additional funding, just like we did this year, in order for us to be flexible and responsive, and change with the market. We know we need to revise compensation policies to align with the current needs and practices, and ensure the procedures exist for accountability, effectiveness, and control. Here's a big item that I want to briefly introduce to you, and this is updating the pay grades. If I had to pick, and this is Mary Ellen speaking, the number-one challenge that we face is the way our pay grades are structured. Our pay grades are structured around 50% to 60% range. That is not what you see in the industry. Normally, pay grades are 30% to 40% spread, from the minimum to the maximum. And that's even less when it comes to entry-level positions. When you think about the nine years it takes to the midpoint, this is in part why. We train people to leave, to go get a fair wage someplace else, because our structure works against us. So we will be looking at bringing to you plans to reduce the range spread, which will make our entry-range wage more competitive, and allow people to move more quickly. And employees are asking us for a career path. This helps establish a clear career path, in terms of growth and wages. We also know we're at risk of losing our really talented senior folks, who are at the top of the range, because our ranges don't move as quickly as the market moves. So that keeps them stagnant at the top of the range. So both of those, the front end and the back end, are creating pressures that we would like to explore, and make some modifications. And then continue to focus on market competitors when we're establishing our salary ranges. Invest in supervisor, manager, and executive leadership training. We know when budgets are cut, we know with COVID, those, one of the things that gets eliminated, which never should, is a focus on training, and in-person, face-to-face training, because we know that's the most effective. We need to reintroduce that and mandate participation. Establish career paths, revise our policies, create opportunities for upward mobility. I'm going to spend a brief second on that, because what that means is, if we can't hire qualified people, we know we have people of character, create the opportunity for them to gain the qualifications to grow a career. And then renew the core culture initiative with county-wide employee participation. That's what helps make Pinellas County a great place to be, and a great place that people want to stay. Additionals and suggestions are sign-on incentives, stay-on incentives at critical points, invest in individuals so they will stay, employee referral awards, student loan repayment, subsidized van pools, revisions, you heard, spoke about performance, and evaluating and recognizing performance as an issue. We need to look at that. Spot awards, recognition awards, modified work weeks, retentive incentives, stipends, stay interviews, as we spoke about earlier, and employee focus groups, to make sure we're capturing the voice of the employee. I want to thank the elected officials, department directors, the judicial branch. In preparation for this work study today, we convened focus groups and meetings with those key individuals to get their inputs. So when we spoke to you today, we were sharing a collective voice versus the HR voice. I also want to thank the HR team. They did a tremendous job in collecting the data, and they're doing a tremendous job for the county, in supporting quality recruitment and retention. And of course, Finance and Budget Department for their continued support. So Chairman, I'm now really turning it, I have questions up there, but really, the question is, what guidance are you able to give us in terms of creating a budget that will help us be responsive immediately to the pressures, and help us build a strategy that we can remain agile and meet the needs over the next year and the years to come?
Does anyone have any comments? Supervisor, I knew it would be you. Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I guess what I'm looking for is options, that you could some package, some different types of scenarios out there. And and then, how does it tie into our policies? Because we may have to change policy. I mean, I'm sure we will, if we come up with some another methodology of how we compensate our employees. I'm sure that'll require some work. So it just appears to be a lot of work in front of us. But I'd like to see a couple of different options. And I think, and then it's not any one is going to really line up with every department. So there may have to be some deviation between types of tasks throughout the throughout the county as well. Does that make sense?
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Miller, this is what I heard you say. To bring back to you, options that reflect a array of approaches, of basically a toolkit, so to speak, that dependent upon the circumstances, that allow offices and departments to pick and choose what makes the most sense for them. If I may, sir, in looking at options, would your guidance be to look at across the board, in addition to some form of merit or performance pay?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Very good.
And certainly going to have to have budget involved in this, because it's going to affect everybody's budgets as we go forward as well. I mean, there's a lot going on there. Anyway, well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Supervisor Goodman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on your presentation, a lot of these areas you've been working and looking into now, currently, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so you've gotten some feedback, or quite a bit of feedback, from the different department heads, as to what they see, which will be beneficial to them in their departments as elected officials, whether it be even our department heads. That's what I'm understanding in all of this, right?
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Goodman, yes. The recommendations that I briefly touched on are a reflection of what we've heard from department heads, elected officials, as well as employees. Those being to address the ranges, so they're not being required to offer a minimum salary that is well below any market competitive wage. That would shrink that, allow for movement in the range, especially for high performers that are documented, critical to their business success. So we have a a number of ideas and suggestions that we can specifically quantify, present some options, and put some dollar signs to.
Okay. Very good. I think actually, Mr. Wolf had something to say. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just want to speak to where we are right today. I think the planning and the things you've talked about are vitally important to the future of the county, and I don't discount any of that work that has gone into it. I would remind everybody that a year ago, I suggested to the board that we increased everybody's salaries across the board about 5%, because I anticipated a highly inflationary 2021. And we did a 2.5%, I believe. And Pinellas County did have about a 10% inflation rate. So my employees today, when they come to me, their complaint is my rent's doubled, food's gone up 30%, my gas has doubled in price. Effectively, at a $56,000 average salary, those folks have taken about a $4,800 hit in purchasing power. Now, I know we're going to backfill with the $1,500, which I think is a good start. But I think we have to look at, before going into a whole comprehensive plan, which is important, saying, we've got to add back to our trust to our employees, that they're not going backwards every year, just because of inflation. You know, we all swim in that water. There's nothing this board can really do about that, that's at the federal level. But we have to look back and say, look, we didn't adequately take care of you last year. We're heading into another year, I think in 2022, where I would say inflation's going to run over 5%, and probably closer to 8% or 9%. And so we're going to be looking at purchasing power again for our employees. So whatever we decide to do today, that's the board's decision. But speaking to my employees who come in and talk to me weekly or daily, this is the problems they're facing, just meeting their monthly expenses, because, again, rents in Pinellas County has doubled, food's up 30%, and gas has doubled in price. So I take any questions, if you have any, but that's my two cents worth as far as the compensation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions, but I'd still like to continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Sure, thank you.
So, you know, I have, I lean a little bit to what Supervisor Miller was stating, is that maybe a combination of both, a flat increase, as well as some type of system that allows the, you know, we heard two great stories, where they were given some flexibility within their departments, that allowed them to do the things that they needed to do within their departments, to to help correct some of the some of the lack in pay, and things of that nature. The other thing is, going back to the very point, you know, Mr. Wolf brought up, that we gave a 2.5% flat increase last year. But in addition to that, we absorbed the total cost of any kind of increase in the health insurance. And that is something that continues to get almost overlooked by the county employees, when they don't, when there is a substantial increase every year, or enough that would eat up any of their increases that we've given them over the last several years. And we consistently have absorbed that, so that they still realize the increase in pay that they get every year. And so those things need to be considered and communicated to the employees, you know, not only are we giving you this right here, but we're also absorbing the cost of the insurance that we're being increased by. And so that, you know, employees need to see and understand those type of things in a much better way, I believe.
A different way of showing the increase, a different way of showing how they get paid?
Yes.
On a, like a pie chart?
Yes, correct. That would be a good way to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Goodman, that goes back to your statement earlier, where you called out that a median employee's salary is $54,000. If you look at the benefits on top of that, including healthcare, there's an additional $18,000, and that's employee-only, for the total investment of $70,000. And when we look at our family coverage, which is extraordinary, that investment goes to $80,000, about 85.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Chairman, if I may wrap up, and this would, and if I'm out of line, I'm sure you'll let me know. I think it's really important that I leave today, not only with the message and the guidance to explore across the board, to explore better communication to employees regarding their total compensation package, and some kind of strategy for performance. But I would appreciate an opportunity to leave today with some kind of message that we recognize, that the 2.5% that has been the tradition, we recognize, is either what we're looking at, or we're we're given the opportunity to look at a salary advancement that would be more reflective of our current market. And employees are encouraged to stay because the county is invested in them.
I believe that you came up with that, and said that we were we were beginning with a 6% increase and looking at that. And I think that's a great place to start.
Thank you.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, may I? I would not be opposed to considering two additional of the retention bonuses in, as a stopgap measure, much like the one we just did. So that could be a possibility, too.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. And I know the employees are grateful to you as well.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Appreciate it. And last, but not least, number five, presentation and discussion of the Florence Administrative Complex feasibility study. Mr. Carrion?
Mr. Chairman. I would recommend a five-minute recess.
Okay, we do have another, we do have another program going on at the moment that we're supposed to be at, but we
Go ahead, and I'll come back.
We will take a three-minute recess. Allow us, please. I have from the from the agenda. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.